To item 8.3, and at this time I'm recusing myself and leaving the dais. And I apologize to those who are here for AC Transit because I realize it's a late hour. But I am sorry that there are other people that were coming, and other items as well. Who wanted to speak on. So these are your things?
Oh.
Good luck. I'll be out there.
Andre.
Andre.
I am ready.
Let's roll.
All right. Vice Mayor Brinkman and members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to review the design of Parkside Park and the removal of the existing trees. This was put on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Asher. An overview of what I'm going to talk about. First, I'll review the history of the Parkside Apartment Project, then the design of the private parking lot that we need to accommodate in the park site, a little bit about how the park design was developed, a review of the arborist report that was prepared by the applicant for the trees in the parking lot area, the construction staging and parking lot phasing, and then finally, a look at the existing and the proposed trees, and then some concluding remarks. All of these things are interrelated and germane to the issue of the park design and the trees. The history of the Parkside Apartment Project. It was first introduced to the community at a community meeting in April of 2007. That was followed by a number of Planning Commission study sessions and a City Council study session in April of 2008. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared to satisfy the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. This was the environmental review for the project. The removal of the trees was not identified as an impact. However, the ISMND did make it explicit that all of the landscaping on the site, including all of the trees in the parking lot, were to be removed. The Planning Commission approved this ISMND and recommended approval of the project on April 23, 2008, and the City Council certified this ISMND and approved the project on November 18 of 2008. The conditions of approval, as imposed by the City Council, required that the applicant construct a new city park at the city parking lot on Stanford Avenue and also preserve two of the brick walls of one of the buildings on the site, the one on the east end of the block. This is the site plan that was in the ISMND, so this was kind of early on, in 2008. There's a couple of things I want to point out about this. One is you'll notice that none of the existing trees, either street trees or trees in the park parking lot, are shown. This has indicated that all of the trees and all of the landscaping would be new. So that was an assumption at that time, that all the existing landscaping would be removed and replaced with new landscaping. The other thing I want to point out is the parking here along Stanford Avenue, which was an early proposal for how to accommodate the parking that belongs to the building across the street, which I'll get into more in a minute. But I just want to point it out in this drawing, because as you can see here, it's angle parking. This is the only drawing I'm going to show you that shows it as angle parking, but that was one of the concepts that was considered at one point, and that's where we were when the ISMND was prepared. There were a number of visual simulations of the project in the ISMND that showed the before and after view, as we typically do for these large development projects. This is the view from Hollis Street and Stanford Avenue. You can see all the existing trees here in the parking lot, and then the existing building, and then the simulation of the new project would have looked like this. This is the new building, and then you can see it shows all new trees here. The existing trees were not shown as being retained. This is a similar visual simulation from the corner of Doyle and Stanford at the southeast corner of the site. Here is the brick wall that was to be preserved as part of the project, and the visual simulation of the new project showed it like this. Here's the brick wall preserved, and new building behind and above it, and again, new trees are shown in place of the existing trees. I would point out also that this is a different park and parking layout than we're dealing with now, because this was the concept at that time. Now concerning this private parking lot, PRC Medical, which previously the building across the street on Stanford Avenue and these 41 parking spaces in the city lot were owned by a company called Diversified Holdings. Midway through the process of developing the Parkside Apartment Project, that property was bought by PRC Medical. They then got a conditional use permit for it. They inherited the parking spaces in the parking lot, and one of their conditions of approval was that they agree to cooperate with the city in trying to figure out how to redesign the parking to accommodate this park that we had going on right then. The new park design needs therefore to accommodate these parking spaces. A number of different options were looked at for how to do that, and then ultimately this had to be negotiated with PRC, because we have to do a land swap with them. So they had to agree to swap the land and what the new configuration would be, and if they didn't like the parking lot layout, they weren't going to agree to it. The decision was ultimately made to have the parking lot at the east end of the block with the driveway from Doyle Street. And as I say, that requires a land swap between the city and PRC. And throughout the consideration of all of these different parking schemes, it was always assumed that the existing trees were going to be replaced with new trees. So, you know, hindsight is 20/20. If we had thought about preserving the existing trees when we were going through this exercise, that would have had impacts on some of the different parking layouts that we considered. This is the land title survey map that was prepared. It shows the Archstone property with the two existing buildings, and also the city parking lot, and the private parcels that are owned by PRC now. This blue line outlines the city parking lot parcel, and these two red rectangles are the two parcels that are owned by PRC. As you can see, they're islands in the middle of the city property. They're owned in fee. It's not an easement. They actually own these parking spaces. The maneuvering aisle in the parking lot, you can see half of it is on the PRC parcels, and the other half of it is on the city property, and the driveways are on the city property. So the city and PRC have reciprocal easements to use each other's halves of the maneuvering aisle, and then PRC has an easement to use the city's driveways. This is an early landscape plan from 2007, when the project was in its formative stage. At that time, we were considering 90-degree parking off of Stanford Avenue to accommodate this private parking. And now I'm going to show you a series of different alternatives that we looked at, and in each of these alternatives, we tried to figure out how it would affect the size and shape of the park, and how wide it would be, and all trying to figure out a way to accommodate these 41 parking spaces. So this is the scheme with the 90-degree parking off Stanford Avenue. This is the most efficient, and it certainly provides you with the largest park. It, I think, in retrospect, this probably would have required the removal of all or most of the trees along Stanford Avenue, but this was unacceptable for a number of reasons. As far as PRC is concerned, this is a nightmare in terms of policing, because it would be very difficult to keep the public from using these parking spaces, and they're all supposed to be private spaces. And secondly, Stanford Avenue is a bicycle boulevard, and having a 90-degree parking like this on a bicycle boulevard is just not good practice. It basically would have meant that the bicycles are having a ride through them, essentially through the middle of a parking lot. So this idea was quickly discarded, even though it's the one that was shown in the ISMND, because that's where we were at that point. Another option would have been to just do the same thing, but push it further into the park, so that the maneuvering aisle is now off the street, and it's just access from two driveways at either end. That would have made the park quite a bit smaller and narrower, and made it a kind of an odd shape, but it was one possibility. Another option that was considered was to flip that around and have the parking spaces on the south side with a maneuvering aisle on the north side. That would have meant that the whole parking lot would have gotten longer and would have had to take up more of the park, because now the driveways have to be at the far ends of where the parking spaces are. So this didn't seem terribly viable either. Another option that the City Council actually directed us to look at, one of the council members at the time thought that this might be something that could work. He suggested putting the parking on the other side of Stanford in front of the, what was then the Diversified Holdings building. So we did study that, but that has a number of problems. First of all, it only gives you 28 parking spaces, which isn't enough, and it eliminates five of their existing spaces down here at the west end, and it puts a jog in the street. The park is not an unreasonable size, but this just didn't seem to be very workable because of all the, well, mainly because it didn't give them enough parking spaces, and also because it still would have been very difficult to police these spaces and keep the public from parking in them. So what ultimately was, oh, excuse me, there's another option that was considered, was this would retain their existing rectangular parcels. So if you were to do this, no land swap would have been required, but in order to have the rest of it as park, the parking spaces would have been put on the other side of the rectangles, on the north side instead of the south side, and the maneuvering aisle moved to the south side, there would have had to be some additional land paved over for additional maneuvering aisle space in order to get the full width of a maneuvering aisle, and then driveways coming out onto Stanford Avenue. So this would have given us a rather odd configuration of a park that would have been less than half an acre, two separate parking lots, but it wouldn't have required a land swap. So if we wanted to avoid having to do a land swap, we could have gone with this scheme. Ultimately, it was decided that what we needed to do is just to create an autonomous parking lot, and so the question is, where would that go? One option that was considered was have it at the east end down here, and that gives you a fairly sizable, nicely shaped rectangular park down here that's about half an acre and a little over 75 feet wide. This was where we were when we started talking to PRC, and with them, we looked at two different options. One was basically the same idea, but at the east end of, I mean, the west end of the park. A couple of problems with this is that the driveway is on Stanford Avenue, and because the driveway comes off the side instead of the end of the parking lot, it means the whole parking lot has to get longer. It also would have included six public parking spaces, and so the access would have been from the bike boulevard, and this would have bifurcated the public park area into a plaza at the west end and a park at the east end, which didn't seem terribly viable. So we finally ended up with basically the scheme, I just, Scheme F, which is at the east end of the park with the 41 parking spaces. And notice here, the driveway is shown as being 12 feet wide, and there's a fair amount of extra landscaping here at the end, and then the big park over here. So we negotiated this with PRC. This is what they liked, but then Archstone sat down with a ruler, you know, a scale, and started dimensioning it all out and figuring it out, and this is the plan that ultimately was agreed to by everybody, by PRC, by the city, and by Archstone. I want to point out a couple of things that are a little different than the scheme that I just showed. One is this scheme now has 43 parking spaces instead of 41. PRC said they'd like to get up a couple more parking spaces out of this, if they could, as part of the deal, and so we agreed to that. And we did that by taking it out of the landscape end down here at the east end, so it didn't enlarge the size of the parking encroaching into the park area. These are stormwater treatment areas right here that are required for the parking lot, and they'll be part of the PRC parcel. And notice here that the driveway is now 20 feet wide. That's because PRC insisted on having a two-lane driveway, so that cars can be coming and going at the same time, rather than having to wait for one going in, having to wait for the other going out. One thing I should mention at this point is PRC, I believe, stands for Pain Rehabilitation Clinic, or something like that. They are a medical clinic that treat patients who are in pain of various types, and this is where their patients park. And so it's important for their patients to be able to get from here over to the building as painlessly as possible, if you will, as easily as possible without, you know, having to go out of their way too much. And that's relevant later on. So this is what we agreed. Now, this is going to require a land swap. If you recall, there was two rectangular parcels that PRC now owns, and this, whoops, okay, that looks like this. So this is the one rectangle they own, this is the other rectangle they own. The one that's red-hatched would be sold by PRC to the city, and they would keep this one over here, and then this kind of donut shape in blue that surrounds it is now owned by the city, would be sold to PRC. So after the land swap is done, PRC will own this, and the city will own all of this. And by the way, this land swap will be coming to you for approval within the next few months. We've been working on the surveys and all the legal documents and everything that are necessary to make this happen. So that's how we ended up with that parking design. Now, in terms of the park itself, there were community meetings about that in April 2008 and October 2011. There were a number of comments that were made at these, at the second community meeting related to trees. Specifically, appreciation was expressed for the proposed Magnolia Saucer Specimen tree that would be in a raised planter near the corner of Hollis and Stanford. An open lawn was preferred to a clump of trees in order to keep the space open. I'll show you what these comments refer to in a minute. The existing brick facade that was to be kept and incorporated into the project should not be hidden by trees, and that street trees along the western portion of Stanford Avenue could be in the lawn area instead of between the curb and the sidewalk where we usually like them to be, in order to maximize the park area. There was no mention of preserving the existing trees at either of these community meetings. And the Planning Commission unanimously approved the design of the park, including the tree removal, on December 8, 2011. With the mayor recused, the City Council approved the park design on February 7 of this year by a vote of three to one. The no vote was Councilmember Atkins, who had concerns about the design of the dog park, not about the trees. The Planning Commission and City Council meeting notices and staff reports all clearly identified that there would be removal of all of the existing trees in the park and parking lot area. So this was not a secret. It was not being kept hidden from anybody. It was all out in the open. This is one of the slides that was contained in the Planning Commission presentation, and as you can see, there was a large text box on that slide that clearly said that all the trees, as shown here on this diagram, were to be removed. So this is one of the two alternative park schemes that were looked at. The comment about the Magnolia Saucer tree is right here. This was the specimen Magnolia Saucer tree that people liked. The comment about having open lawn area as opposed to trees kind of referred to all these trees here and these trees over here, that it was preferred to have it to be more open. And I can show you on this other scheme, Scheme B, this is another place where there were quite a few trees here and here, and people said they would prefer to have more open lawn area with trees around the perimeter, rather than, you know, clumps of trees here. And in this scheme, there were a lot of trees shown here in front of this brick wall. People thought that was too many, and that it would block the view of the brick wall. The idea of the trees in the park instead of next to the curb, down at this end, you can see at the eastern end, the trees are shown between the curb and the sidewalk where we like to have them. In this area, they're shown behind the sidewalk in order to move the sidewalk as close to the street as possible, so that you can have as big of a park as possible, because it's a very confined area. So people were willing to have the trees behind the sidewalk here in order to make the park larger. So that's what those tree comments at the community meeting were about. And then this is the scheme that was ultimately chosen. It's sort of a combination of the two previous schemes, including a dog park and the Saucer Magnolia Accent tree. And you'll notice it has fewer trees over here in front of the brick wall in order to try to reveal that wall, and fewer clumps of trees and more trees just around the perimeter. Concerning the arborist report, the applicant had an arborist report prepared in January of 2012. We did not ask for this report. The applicant prepared it on their own. The Planning Commission had already approved the park design in December of 2011, so they didn't see this report, but it was provided to the City Council. The introduction of the report says that it contains the appraised values of the trees and tree preservation guidelines, but in fact, it does not. And so we were asked about that. So in order to try to answer that question, and let me just say here, we didn't keep any of the previous versions of the report, so we couldn't go back and look at it and see what was in it and what had been omitted and so forth. And frankly, this wasn't really on the top of our brains back then, so we didn't really remember exactly what had transpired. But when I asked my staff about these sections, the recollection was, oh, they, we asked them to be removed from the report because they weren't relevant. Well, it turns out that that recollection was a little bit faulty. That isn't really what happened. What happened was, we told the arborist to remove the sections of the report that were pertaining to the street trees on Doyle and Powell Street. His original version of the report included all the trees, both in the park area and on the streets surrounding the park. And when we saw that in the report, we said, well, what's going to the City Council is the design of the park, so we really don't need this information about the street trees, and besides, we already have our own city arborist report about the street trees with valuations, so we really don't need this, so please take it out of the report. And that arborist was recommending preservation of a couple of the street trees, which you all did ultimately require to be retained, the ones on Doyle Street. The tree preservation guidelines that were alluded to were the guidelines about how to preserve those street trees. So anyway, we did get the all four previous versions of the arborist report, just to confirm what was in it and what was not in it, and all four versions are attached to your staff report, so you can read them all if you want to. All four versions of the report mentioned the appraised value of the trees, but none of them actually include it. We did ask the arborist about this, and he confirmed that he never prepared an appraisal of the tree's value. His stating in the introductory section that the report included that information was a mistake, and my assumption is that it was probably boilerplate. That's probably what his standard format is, and he just neglected to take that out of the report. And as I say, the preservation guidelines that were in the previous versions refer to the street trees. They did not refer to the trees in the park area. And no version, none of these four versions of the report ever recommended, ever recommended preserving any of the existing trees in the park or parking lot area. The arborist report says there's two kinds of trees in the park and parking lot area. There's 22 Chinese elm and 11 African fern pines, and these trees are rated for their suitability for preservation as either good, moderate, or poor, based on a variety of factors. Good means a tree that's in good health and structural stability with potential for longevity at the site. Nine of these 33 trees are in that category. Moderate is declining health and/or structural defects that can be abated with treatment and will require more intense management and monitoring, and may have shorter lifespan. There's 22 in that category, and this is more or less verbatim from the arborist report. Poor is poor health or significant structural defects that cannot be mitigated. These trees are expected to continue to decline regardless of treatment and may have undesirable characteristics for landscapes and generally unsuitable for use areas, and two trees are in that category. As of now, eight of these 33 trees have been removed. Seven of them are adjacent to the brick wall, and one is adjacent, or was, adjacent to the construction trailer. This map is something I created by overlaying the trees from the arborist report with the approved park and parking lot plan. This is the plan that was approved by the council on February 7. What this shows is the shape of the symbol indicates the kind of tree. So diamonds are Chinese elm, and round are African fern pines. So the Chinese elm are mostly out here on the south side along Stanford, and the African fern pines are mostly up here against the buildings. And then the colors indicate whether they're, good is green, yellow is moderate, and red is poor. As you can see, the ones, the nine that are good are all out here. They're all Chinese elms. They're all out here on Stanford Avenue. The majority of the trees are in the moderate category, and the two poor ones are back here against the building on, and those are African fern pines. Now, the eight trees that have now been removed are these, the ones against the brick wall, and one over here that had to be removed in order to install the construction trailer. I'll come back in a minute to looking at all of these different trees, but first I want to talk about the staging before construction of the paper mill, excuse me, the Parkside Apartment Project. So here's an aerial photograph of how it all looks before anything happens. The first thing they did was to put in a construction trailer in the city parking lot down here. They got an encroachment permit from Public Works to do that, and they put the trailer in, and a fence. This red dashed line represents the construction fence that goes all the way around the site, including on the street. You can see here that it runs along the south side of the parking spaces on the north side of the lot. So these are the former public parking spaces. They've all now been fenced off. They're not available for public use anymore. The only spaces that are available are the ones over here that belong to PRC, and there's big signs at the driveways in that say, "PRC Parking Only." This area is intended for future staging of construction next to, this is called Building A, this is called Building B. Now, Building A includes a, excuse me, before I get to that, the site is contaminated and it needs to be remediated, so groundwater and soil is going to be remediated. That requires water treatment tanks, and those are proposed to be put over here behind the fence. This is the footprint of the basement parking garage. There'll be one level of below-grade parking in Building A, and this is about the footprint of what that will look like. As you can see, it's very close to these trees over here. The trucks that will be coming through the site to take the dirt away from this big hole are going to be coming up Powell Street from the freeway, turning right into the site here, loading up here, then coming out through here across the parking lot, and then right on Stanford and back towards the freeway. There isn't enough room here to turn around on the site and go out on Powell, and even if they were to do that, they can't turn left on Powell because of this median, so they'd have to come out here and turn right, and then probably just go around the block like this. So this really is the only practical way for these construction vehicles to go. But notice that they go right through the parking lot. There will be scaffolding eventually put up on this side of this building when the building is up and out of the ground. Similarly, there will be scaffolding over here for working on the brick facade of Building B, as well as the new construction that goes above it. So that's what the construction traffic picture kind of looks like. Now, to move into the phasing of the parking, what we have to do is create a new parking lot for PRC down here, and at the same time, we have to make sure that they still have their 41 parking spaces throughout the entire construction process. So Phase 1 of the parking, it looks like this. It's basically what's out there today. They have their existing parking spaces and the existing driveway, but notice that the truck traffic is going right through the middle of it, and these are patients in pain trying to get to the doctor across the street, and they will pretty much have to walk through the parking lot and walk right through the same driveway where all these construction trucks are going. So what Archstone has offered to do for PRC is to create a couple of pathways along either side. Essentially, what this does is it creates little sidewalks on either side of the driveway so that the patients can take this pathway out here to the side, the public sidewalk. There will be a flagman out here who will direct traffic and make sure that the patients can safely get across the street and that they don't get run over by these construction trucks. But unfortunately, these paths are going to mean that at least two of the existing trees in the park are going to have to be removed, because they're right where these paths would be. So in Phase 2, I want you to look at the dashed red line and see how it moves, like so. In Phase 2 of the parking, all of this area down here has to be cleared out, because this is where the new parking lot is going to be built, and 41 parking spaces have to be provided somewhere else, and the only place to put them really is over here. Now, let me just say that PRC has looked for other parking spaces, and I personally have contacted Novartis and Bayer to see if there are other parking spaces, parking lots, that they might have available in the vicinity. We've come up short. There are no other, there do not appear to be any other parking facilities available in the immediate area that they could use on a short-term basis. And believe me, Archstone and PRC and the city, we would all love to not have these patients have to park here, but there doesn't seem to be any other place to put them. So this is where they would be. Now, I want you to also notice, where'd the keyboard go? I want you to also notice that this edge of the parking lot right here has moved out. In the previous view, it's like this, but in order to accommodate the 41 parking spaces down here, it moves out, and this is where there are some existing trees. So those trees would probably have to go. It might be possible to reconfigure this, depending on how much they can squeeze in, to push it all back so that you could somehow squeeze the 41 spaces in here without having to remove these trees, but that is not at all clear at this point. We don't know. That would have to be studied further, if that was the council's desire. And then finally, in the last phase of this, if you watch the red line again, you'll see that, whoops, oh, I'm sorry, the construction traffic and the basement goes away and the trucks go away. So it would end up actually looking like this. Then in the last phase, it'll look like this. The, now, all of this end of the parking lot park area will be enclosed in the construction fence, and the new parking lot of PRC will be outside the construction fence. They will now own this. It'll be their parking lot. They will be happily out of the way and in their own space, and this is after the land swap has happened, and then the, I mean, Archstone will build the new park in the green area here. So, sorry.
Charlie, tell me about the berm.
Oh, I'm getting to that.
What's going to happen to the berm?
It would be leveled.
And that's where the trees are?
Yes.
How, all right.
I'll, I'm getting right to that. So here are the existing trees again. So here are the existing trees again, and I'm just going to quickly go around the site as I did in the staff report by the four quadrants of the parking lot. So here we have in the northeast area, these seven trees, they've already been taken down. Here's what that looks like. There really isn't much point in talking about that any further since those trees are now gone. This is what that elevation will look like with those five new trees that were shown in the plan, in order to try to reveal this wall, and they would be spaced evenly so that they line up with the window spacing of the new building. I'm sorry, of the existing building, with the new building above it. These trees over here in the southeast quadrant are unfortunately all pretty much within the PRC parking lot area, except a couple that are out here sort of in the middle of the sidewalk. Now, the one tree that might be salvageable is this one down here at the east end. This is where the width of that driveway becomes important. As you can see here with the 20-foot wide driveway, that tree is right on the edge of the driveway. It's probably not possible to save it, being so close to the driveway. If the driveway were 12 feet wide, if PRC were willing to agree to that, which I don't think they are, it might be possible with four or five more feet of space to be able to save that tree. This tree looks like this. Over here are the trees in the northwest quadrant, and they are adjacent to the existing building that's currently being demolished, and they will be heavily impacted by the excavation of the garage, and these trees are slated to be removed. And the new trees that would be planted, this is a view, an elevation of that, and as you can see here, the cafe frontage is kept clear of trees, and then there's other trees down here at this end. This is the mid-block pedestrian access. The public can walk through the middle of the project to get from Powell to Stanford. Now, these are the trees in the southwest quadrant. This one is now gone. These are, well, these are on a berm, and these actually over here are also on the berm. Now, there's been some talk about they, it looks like the proposed new trees and the existing trees are only a few feet apart. Why not just keep the existing trees and leave the rest of the plan as is? The problem is, you can't really do that because you have to look at both, not only the horizontal dimension, but also the vertical dimension. And this is what those trees look like on Stanford Avenue. You can see the berm here a little bit. It goes up about a foot and a half, maybe a couple of feet. Here's a closer view. The sidewalk is out here, the parking lot's here. It slopes up and back down again. There's also a considerable grade change just from Stanford back here to the face of the building. So there's a fair amount of grading that's going to have to occur in the park in order to level this out and have the required ADA access and have a usable lawn area in what is already a fairly constrained space. Here's another view of the trees on the berm. Now, in order to accommodate these trees, if we were to lower the grade as the approved park design shows, that would probably end up exposing a foot or so of the roots of these trees, which obviously is not going to work. Perhaps a little bit of the berm around the tree could be retained, but it's not clear how well that would work. Probably the best way, if it's the council's desire to save these trees, the way to do that is to just keep this existing berm as it is and design the park around this berm. That is probably going to mean a total redesign of the park because it's, the park was not designed with this berm in mind.
Charlie, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Why the berm in the first place? Where did the berm come from?
Oh, it's been there for years. I don't know.
Was it part of the original planting of the trees? Was this the method for keeping the trees healthy, or what?
Oh, I don't, well, I don't know. Maurice, were you around then?
I was around when we built the park, yes, but I can't recall why the architect at that time decided to build the berm, but it does provide for a healthier environment, a healthier sort of.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's true. I mean, Molly Bachelder at the study session, both at the council and the planning commission, said that putting a big mound around the trees is, you know, the best way to plant them.
Yeah.
So there is this one tree down here at the end. It's a good candidate for preservation, and it is not on a berm, and it's out of the way, and it wouldn't be impacted by the parking lot. The only real, and the whole thing could be redesigned to preserve that tree. The only problem there is really one of aesthetics, which is that the saucer magnolia tree that people seem to like so much is right here, and having a fairly large existing tree right next to what's supposed to be the focal point, an accent tree in the park, is going to look kind of funny to have these two trees sort of competing for attention. So if this tree were to be retained, you'd probably want to get rid of this accent tree or move it somewhere else or something. So that would require a redesign of this area. This is what that tree looks like, and the saucer magnolia, which this is just a picture I pulled off the internet, but this is what a saucer magnolia looks like when it's in bloom. So, you know, the choice is, you know, do you want to keep this tree or do you want to replace it with something like this? Now, I would point out, this tree at maturity is 20 feet, 25 feet tall by 25 feet wide. It won't be that big when it's planted. It's, and they are kind of slow growing. However, the specification for this tree is a 36-inch box, which is going to be the largest tree, the largest new tree in the park, so it will be fairly substantial size when it goes in. So in conclusion, the Parkside Park Apartment and Park Project was developed over a six-year period with lots of citizen participation. Removing of the existing trees in the park area was consistently identified as an aspect of this project. Preservation of the existing trees was not raised as a goal during this process until a few months ago. No version of the arborist's report that was prepared by the applicant ever recommended preservation of any trees in the park area, and the arborist never prepared an appraisal of the value of the existing trees. The construction staging and parking lot phasing is complicated. It consists of a lot of different moving parts, and working around the existing trees will be a challenge. The proposed park will include many new trees, which will be planted in better conditions and will ultimately thrive better than the existing trees. Nonetheless, the park and parking lot could be redesigned to preserve some of these existing trees if that's the council's desire. Since the applicant has already spent significant money preparing construction drawings and paying permit fees in reliance on the park design approved by the council in February, the city will need to pick up any additional costs involved in redesigning the park to preserve these trees. And I did talk to the applicant this morning. His, off the top of the head, estimate is about $75,000, including the landscape architect's time, the civil engineer's time, the arborist's time, and the efforts that will be needed to preserve the existing trees. And that's assuming that the construction valuation of the park will basically remain the same as it is now, so there won't be any change in the permit fees. So we're looking probably somewhere around $75,000, maybe $100,000 for this. We suggest that such costs could come out of the major maintenance fund, which currently has a balance of a little over $8 million. And we are here to seek your direction as to whether you want to redesign the park and parking lot to preserve these existing trees. If so, which trees? Or to proceed with the park design as it was previously approved by the council in February. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions at this time? No? We have three speakers. Darlene Kustofstus?
Kustofstus.
I'm sorry about that.
Kustofstus, that's okay. I'm the representative for PRC, the doctors, across the street. Basically, our objection to keeping the trees is not the trees themselves. We're very excited to have the park across the street. We're just concerned with the safety of our patients. And the way that would be impacted is, right now, Archstone, as Charlie said, had agreed to put pedestrian walkways there to protect our patients while the heavy construction equipment is coming and exiting through that parking lot. Now, our patients are mostly orthopedic patients with some form of disability because they are chronic pain patients. So they're not, their maneuverability is not the best at any time. So right now, that's what we're concerned about. We need those pedestrian walkways. Right now, there's a lot of big construction equipment there, and I believe it puts our patients in danger. So that's the concern right now. Now, going forward, the tree, Charlie talked about the entrance to the new parking lot, and the reason why we're concerned about that being a 20 feet, I think it was, compared to 12, is we need it to have enough room for cars to enter and exit because it is a busy parking lot. We see a lot of patients. And again, with our patients going into the parking lot and trying to access their cars, with cars trying to jockey and maneuver to get in and out with only one car space to exit or enter is also a concern for our patient's safety. So that's our major concern, is our patient's safety.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ken Bukowski?
I just hope we could explore the potential of maintaining some of the trees. Thank you.
Okay. Richard Ambro?
Hi, I'm Richard Ambro, and I urge you to try to save as many of the trees as possible for all the reasons I've spoken earlier. Save as many as possible and practical. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Why don't you queue up over here?
I appreciate all the effort that has gone into this reconsideration, Charlie's report, and I appreciate all the problems associated with the trees. I just wish that this had happened before and that we had had this consideration a long time ago, and I just hope that in the future, trees will be a part of the process and that we won't start with a blank slate when we have existing trees to consider. One thing about the report that I find really a bit disturbing is that for a temporary parking lot, we are going to take down trees. That's the part that really strikes me as unnecessary. So thank you for the reconsideration, and I really am quite attached to the tree at Doyle and Stanford myself. That's the tree that would be in the driveway. I was wondering if perhaps that one could be one that would be saved with a slight rearrangement of the driveway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to address Mr. Bryant. He seems, the report, the report he just gave, he seems to have, it's like, he has incredulity that the citizens didn't rise up earlier to protect these, to have these trees be protected, as if that somehow means that they shouldn't now be protected. So I don't understand that logic. What you've got here is citizenry that's becoming aware that the trees are going to be removed, obviously, and they don't like it. Before, they weren't aware, and so that's why the citizens probably weren't as vocal. So I posit to Mr. Bryant that you should consider that, that there's a greater awareness now among the citizenry that the trees are going to be removed, and that's pretty simple, I think. Okay, two points here. Okay, Mr. Bryant showed that they're going, they intend to put up these walkways for the patients, for the clinic, on either side of the construction driveway, and that's going to require taking down some of the trees. But I put, I posit that we get not do that and instead have, employ flag people, which are going to be employed anyway, from what I understand, out in the street, employ flag people to assist in patients walking down the driveway and across the street, thereby making it so we don't have to put, kill more trees. So to direct the flag people to assist the patients, you don't have to have the walkways that they indicated, and that's a way to save several of them right there. Who picks up that tab? I'd say, doesn't matter if trees are nice things. Nice things are, cost money. Not, cheap things are, don't cost very much money. So we're trying to make a nice town here, so. Okay, the woman from the clinic said that she doesn't want to have a narrow driveway, and that's why we need to have this extra-wide driveway, and that's going to end up killing some more trees. Well, everybody here should be aware that Horton Street, the Horton Street Bike Boulevard is ready now for Level 4 traffic coming. Now, this means a chicane or a choker. This means narrowing down the street to one lane, so only one car capacity at a time. So we can have a major thoroughfare like Horton Street narrowed down to one lane, one car at a time. Certainly, this little clinic parking lot can constrict down to one lane. Is it worth killing a bunch of trees to have some patient stand idling in their car for just a moment while a car, another car leaves the driveway? I say no. I don't think it's too much to ask.
Okay. Adrian?
Vice Mayor, this resident would like to have more time. He'd like to give a short report. I know it's at your discretion, so.
Three minutes.
No more time?
No more time.
Is this the mouse?
Yeah. I should do it quick there. There you go. My name is Adrian McGillie. Thank you very much, Mr. Bryant, for that very thorough presentation, and I learned a lot from it, and I see just how complicated the situation is and how long a period of time this work has been going on. And it gave me a bit of an understanding of how, how in the end, it might appear like certain details weren't being communicated to the public because perhaps they had taken place a long time ago, or perhaps because they were very complicated. I took the time to prepare a presentation talking about two things, and it looks like I'm not going to have time to give it, so now I'm going to try and figure out what parts of it to give. Basically, I feel like in the end, there was an appearance of bias towards, in this slide, I say towards the developer, but now I would say more towards tree removal or away from tree preservation. And I would like to show some steps that I think could, should be considered, that would allow us to retain the trees, and I encourage the council to pass a motion to reconsider the design. I think what I'll do is skip very quickly through these. There was no mention anywhere of the value of the trees being removed. There were no notices put on the trees to alert residents about their removal. 33 trees are being removed, and there was not one notice put on any of those trees. You know, look at all the people that came out to talk about these eucalyptus trees. Five of them are slated for removal, and it created all of that feedback. So I don't understand why that wasn't done. If it had been done, more residents would have spoken up, so this business of no one speaking up for the trees, I feel, is because of that. It's true that the edits to the arborist's report appear to be fairly benign. However, they did remove this column from the arborist's report. The column called Reason for Removal is in an early version of the report, but here it is missing from the final version of the report. Why? Why would that be done? I find that troubling. There's no mention of this temporary parking lot when the design was presented to the city council, and yet, it's crucial. It's a crucial reason for the trees being removed. So when you present that after the fact, it just creates doubt in people's minds about transparency and full disclosure and those matters, and that's part of the problem here. Why wasn't that mentioned to the city council when they were approving the park design? I don't understand that, and that is one of the reasons that we're here now. There was a slightly misleading statement by a city staff member. I'm going to skip that.
Thank you very much.
That's it?
That's it.
Can other people yield their time?
No, no. It's three, no, it's three minutes.
But you know what you can do? You can come and keep going, keep going through the slides.
No, there's no, Brian, it's three minutes. Every speaker gets three minutes.
Ask the city attorney. It's been done here before. Why before yes and now no?
It's my prerogative, no.
Why before yes and now no?
I have, you'd have to ask the person in charge of that time.
Ask the city attorney. There's a precedence for this.
Hi.
It's public comment?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
I have three minutes.
Yes, you do.
My name is Jennifer West. I'm just going to read these slides, which says, "City staff at Archstone's direction modified agenda of March 20th meeting and got trees on Powell recategorized from valuable street trees to worthless nuisance trees." Transparency. I like transparency in our government. Steps for keeping some of the trees. One, we could find alternative parking solution for PRC. It sounds like that was tried, but perhaps at this time, there may be other options available that weren't considered. I know there are a number of property owners in that area. I know there are a number of property owners in that area. For example, Pickle Works Parking Lot on 55th. It's vacant. It has been vacant, but who knows, you know, in the future, what that would hold. Doyle Street Cafe Lot, which is used daily at certain times of day. Doyle Street next to the school has three-minute loading zone, so that part is not used often during the day because it's not needed for kids' loading, but also is not available for public parking. Across from Hollis, across Hollis from the park, which is, I believe, it used to be public parking, but I believe is no longer, but perhaps could be worked up. Up the road one block, this is near, just south of Powell. Spur Alley also is, these days, when I bike through, vacant most days. Oops. And here's some more pictures of vacant spots on Spur Alley, which is right behind the building, by the way, which is pictured in this. And on Bodry Street, on the street. Steps for keeping some of the trees, stop worrying about the berm, interesting, and the grading issues. I think it's less than it originally said, actually, in the Arborist report. There is a berm in the park right across Doyle Street, which is called Stanford Park. It was designed that way with the berm. So keep the trees with the berm, or move the trees off-site and then put them back afterwards. This was an idea that Councilmember Brinkman also suggested. Who pays probably won't make the same mistakes again. A motion to reconsider requires one council member to second and a total of three votes to pass. Voting in favor shows a commitment to transparent government, informed decision-making, and the preservation of mature trees and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments.
Okay, council comments?
Yeah.
Or is there anybody else who wants to speak on the side of? Andre, you have to stand up.
Again, I look like I'm going to be different, but why not excavate? I mean, the technology is known. The German did that where they're north side against the vision. They dig 200 feet from the sea level, you know, and five-story deep. Then a Belgian architect in the town of Oostend dug 300 feet below the sea level, at about 500 feet from the sea. There is a technique that is done and is safe. So why not? I mean, we found here about the level of parking, well, there is plenty of room downstairs. Or about those car carrier that have car, two-story car on there, and they do it too. And there is a building on Berkeley Side or Peabody Side that have a car elevator for two-story. I mean, something must be done here to prevent all these arguments about how to put the tree, cut the tree, save the tree, and all that, keep the tree and dug it down. Thank you.
Thank you. There was, any other comment? Hearing none, seems. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, and I had a question for Charlie, but I need to look at one of the slides. Can you? Thanks, Charlie. It's number 28.
It'll take a second to fire up again, I think. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
Oh, you, do you want all the graphics on here?
No, I just wanted to talk to you for a second. So the parking lot here, you mentioned that one of the things that you had looked for was alternative parking nearby. And you mentioned, I think, both Bayer and Novartis.
Correct.
How far away would those lots be?
Well, Bayer, it's off this slide, but just to the south here, on the south side of Spur Alley, there's a big parking lot there.
Okay.
And the building is occupied by Bayer. And there were rumors floating around that Bayer was leaving imminently, that the building was going to be vacant, and that the parking lot would be available, and that the parking lot was owned by, and that the building and parking lot were owned by Novartis, all of which turned out to be not true.
True.
I contacted someone I know at Novartis, and she said, "Well, we don't own that building. It's owned by some other people, and Bayer's not leaving." Well, they are leaving, but they're not leaving right now. So that parking lot is not available. She did say that she would look around and see if there were any other Novartis or Bayer lots in the vicinity that might be available, and she never came back with anything.
Okay. And so I'm going to ask something that's a little crazy here, but the Greenway? We own this, right?
Over here?
Yes, the last little strip.
Yeah.
How, what would it take to put, I mean, I don't know when we're going to remediate that or what the plans are for that, but what if we use that for temporary parking? I can't, it's hard to tell here how large it would be or if people could be accommodated there.
Yeah, you could probably do that. Let me just say one thing, though, before you go any further with this train of thought. Okay, here's this notorious temporary parking lot. I had a conversation this morning with Archstone. You notice that this bumps out here a little bit. I asked, "How come the fence can't bump out all the way down here?" I'm not sure exactly what the answer is. Perhaps they need this area here for construction staging, and they don't need this. But let me just say, if it's the will of the council to preserve these trees along here, we'll figure it out. We'll figure out a way to do it. And we'll work with Archstone, and we'll figure out a way to accommodate these 41 parking spaces without taking these trees out. Let me also just say in response to one thing that Mr. McGillie said, this temporary parking lot is not the driving force behind removing these trees. The idea of this temporary parking lot here is just, is a relatively new thing. When we sat down and scratched our heads and tried to figure out, well, how is this jigsaw puzzle going to work when we're having to build a new parking lot for them, and we're going to have to park them somewhere else? Well, it'd have to be over here. The notion of removing these trees has been there from the get-go, as I tried to point out in my presentation. It wasn't, maybe we were all unenlightened, but it was not in anybody's consciousness, staff, developer, city council, planning commission, or any of the citizens who ever came to any of the previous public meetings to preserve these existing trees. So we just assumed they were going to be gone, and therefore, they weren't a factor in laying out this parking lot. So this parking lot is not the reason the trees are going away.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? You know, I had another idea, and I, it was in the last slide. It was one of my comments, but I kind of agree with Andre. Andre's had two good ideas today. I know he gets a lot of good ideas, but.
Not in a thousand.
But there's a lot of places that they can relocate trees. And I would like to have, Pixar did it. They relocated trees. They brought them out of the ground, they put them back in the ground. I'd like to look and see what the cost would be to relocate a couple of the good trees from that site that might be able to be relocated.
Yeah, one thing that you might be able to do, I don't know, the Arborists would have to weigh in on this, but maybe you take the trees out and go storm somewhere, and then you go ahead and build this plan, but instead of new trees, these trees here are the existing trees. That's what she's saying.
That was my idea. So we have plenty of, also what it would do is I propose that we take them down to the building, the old Key Lock Building.
Oh.
Storm right there, so it looks like when you come into town, it softens a little bit.
But then people want those trees back after.
Well, that's different. That's a different problem, but I mean, what I'm saying, I just think what I'm proposing is like a tree library, so when.
Right.
Storm there, we have, I know it's going to be a cost for Maurice to do it, but it would allow the trees to be safely stored because the trees that we're talking about trying to be reused are on a construction site, so things happen. So if we safely get them out of there, storm them, bring them back to this site and another site in town.
I know it's challenging to try to box up and move existing trees. I know Pixar did it. I think those were somewhat different circumstances, but it can probably be done, but I think an Arborist would have to weigh in on that.
Well, I'd like to have that. I'd like to.
Well, we can explode that.
That's my suggestion.
Vice Mayor, are you suggesting that we move ahead with the plans in the park as approved by the planning commission and the city council and the people who were involved in it? In the meantime, pursue this strategy of having our own tree farm down on San Pablo Avenue.
Tree library.
If you make a motion to that effect, I'll support you.
That'd be my motion.
But I think it's critical that we move ahead with the park.
I agree with that.
Try to save as many trees as we can and put them back there.
Yes, sir.
Well, I have a quick question about that. If, for instance, you know, Charlie's indicated, if he's directed to save the trees, that that's what he's going to do, can we, as a council, then, direct staff to save as many of the trees as possible and let them make the decision about whether it's the tree library or keeping them on-site that makes the most sense?
I have no problems with that.
No, that doesn't work because keeping them on-site, you're not going to be able to move ahead with the way the park has been planned, as I understand it.
That's right.
You have, you know, the park is planned to maximize the space, to remove the berm. If you remove the berm, you have to remove the trees. But Kurt's idea of trying to save these trees and then put them back in their full growth, that's a good idea. That's a good compromise, and I would support that. But you can't leave the trees on the site and move ahead and build the park as it has been designed and approved.
Yes, Ruth.
I have a couple. I could make a really bad joke here about not seeing the forest for the trees, but.
Oh, go ahead.
You won't.
But anyway, I do have some kind of smaller-scale comments. I think the one tree that's in good condition that is at the edge of the wide driveway along Doyle Street, I would like to see that one saved. I don't see why the driveway has to be that, as wide as it is, and I think it can be narrowed down. I actually appreciated Brian's comment on that. And then, in terms of another tree, a second tree that's in really good condition that's on Hollis next to where the magnolia would go, it seems to me that there would be, I can see value in having a mature magnolia there. I've seen magnolias grow.
Beautiful.
You mean, I mean.
Jim is still around. When, we took out some trees that were too crowded at Emery Bay Village and put in magnolia as a substitute, and it's worked out well.
Are you saying in addition to keeping that tree?
No, no. I'm saying I can see, I can see the value of having either type of tree there.
But not both.
But for the one that's in good condition there, I think there's probably more of a sentiment to try to keep it. And in terms of the necessity to park PRC during the construction, I think there's lots of options in the neighborhood, including street parking, for patients to do that. So I actually question the need for this temporary lot, even though you said it's not the main reason to remove the trees. The park design is the main reason to remove the trees. So, but I'd actually like to see if we can skip that temporary lot step altogether because I think there's enough on-street and off-street parking in the neighborhood. So those are my comments.
Vice Mayor, if I could comment, I don't think we have an option on this PRC. That's private property, and they have agreements that they're trying to work with the city, but for us to go in and say, you know, "We're going to move you someplace else," I don't think we have the ability to do that. Mr. Biddle, am I wrong on this?
No, we need their cooperation and.
Of course.
And that's what they, that they need, and that's what we have to accommodate.
Okay, well, we had a first and a second as far as trying to save the trees and move them.
Storing them off-site.
Storing them off-site, and then bringing them back on-site and putting them into the.
So the question is, how many have to be stored off-site for the construction to happen, and how many can just be saved and have the construction work around that? And to me, that question really hasn't been answered.
Well, I think that you'd probably want to move as many as you can.
You know, I'm reminded of Magnolia Terrace, which was a housing project on 40th at Adeline. And it was named that way because of a gorgeous magnolia tree. And they were able to work around saving that tree and moving the house, rehabbing the house, all of that. So I think there is some, and the housing developer knew quite well how important it was to save that tree. And to me, quite frankly, there's just an appearance of expediency here rather than really taking some care to preserve some of this. So, I guess I would just, as Charlie said, you know, if there's direction here to save the trees, then they'll work on trying to save the trees, which means keeping them in the ground.
Well, let me just say, though, just to clarify that, as I believe Councilmember Davis said, if going to keep the trees where they are on that berm, the park and Dog Park and Plaza and so forth are all going to have to be redesigned. So we'll have to come back through the planning commission and city council to review and approve a new park design.
Well, I didn't like the dog wrong, anyway.
So would you support the motion? That's what we're trying to get to. Yes, Mr. Biddle.
Are we, are we trying to?
Let's restate the motion.
Are we concentrating on the trees that are in good condition?
We're concentrating on the seven good trees to see what we can do about relocating those seven good trees to get them out of the construction site.
There's actually nine.
There's nine.
Oh, there's nine?
Yes.
Okay, nine good trees. And then, at which time, they would be reincorporated back into the design of the park.
One thing I would say is that the city Arborist was not thrilled with the selection of the street tree that is shown in this plan and suggested that we use some different tree. I've never heard definitively what the recommendation is. I don't see why it couldn't be Chinese Elm.
Okay. So I guess if we don't get, if we call the vote, if we call the vote and the vote doesn't pass, then we go back to the original design, or we go back to what was approved?
Yeah.
Get rid of the trees.
What is, approved is.
There were the trees.
All the questions.
Or you consider another option?
Well, this time, I'm going to recall the question on the motion because we had a first and a second.
Sorry. So.
I have a substitute motion.
Let's go, put on this one first.
No, you can't.
Oh, no, no.
I have to vote on the substitute first.
What's the substitute?
My substitute motion is to keep as many trees in place as possible, and if we have to redesign the park, then we have to redesign the park.
Is there a second for that?
Yeah, a second.
And.
Call a question.
Question.
Give me a second.
Yes.
Okay.
This is for the Davis?
No, this is for.
This is for the substitute motion first.
Asher?
Aye.
Atkins?
Aye.
Davis?
No.
Brinkman?
No.
So now you vote on the.
Now we vote on.
On the original motion.
Okay, call the question that way.
Could you restate it?
Yeah.
It was to store and put back as many of the nine good trees as possible? Is that correct?
That was it.
Build a little forest down on San Pablo.
Build the forest right there at the old Key Building.
Yeah.
Asher?
Aye.
Atkins?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Brinkman?
Aye.
Just to clarify, we don't know how much this is going to cost, but I'm assuming that.
It's going to be cheaper than redesigning the park, Charlie.
You betcha.
Well, I'm assuming that the council is giving us authority to take this from the major maintenance fund, as we have recommended.
Yes. Moving along.
Here we go.
We'll come back with a.
Thank you all for hanging.
Birmingham resolution.
Bring back your resolution.
You can't leave. Everyone wants to listen to PG&E.